Five, holding notice of the respective place. City of Lamarcov, borough of Stockton, township of West Danwell. Advertise on school district website and advertise under the county Democrat. Brent Times newspaper. Uh, let's stand for the plan.
This is why I'm in United States of America. The Republic where the extent. While the nation of their own individual delivery of sprawl.
Peter, would you mind the, uh, please?
Uh, Jennifer Bachelor here. Uh, Martha Dennis here. Uh, Gina Vaschetti. Brian Keys.
Here.
Capricule Leskey. Aaron O'Leary. Michael Schraub here. Ryan Tom Marino here. Jim Gallagher.
Here.
Of the right of reflection, so there is your. Um, first up, we have buildings grounds, transportation, planning and safety. Um. Brian, you want to address this or do you want to let I come and tell?
So one thing I wanted to just mention on there of a document that we had it since our last board meeting. Um, and this really was in reference to some concerns about the septic system. Um, there is an addendum to the purchase and sale agreement that was added to the data room for the auction. Um, last week and I just want to call attention to number thirteen on the bottom. And I'm going to read it specifically, you can see it up on the screen. Um, no representation is made by the seller with respect to the existing septic system servicing the property. Or the state local laws, rules and regulations with jurisdiction. Over. The use and the limitation of the existing and future septic system servicing the same. Buyers encouraged to review NJDOP regulations and local township regulations pertaining to the property's septic system. It's wastewater management plan. And the impact of the same on a subsequent owner's future use of the property. The permits for the existing septic system servicing the property are not assignable to subsequent owners of the property. The septic system for the property discharged into the Alex Dalton Creek. Which is a category one stream regulated by the NJDOP. So we just wanted to make sure that um, to be in full transparency with the public. That this information was shared with all of the prospective bidders in today's auction. And then it's up to them to do their due diligence to research the septic system.
Um, with that, we do have a need to make a motion. You're approving it, that's something we're approving it, so we do need a motion for approval of the addendum. But move by Ronnie, and I'm second please.
Second.
Second, oh Brian. Uh, any discussion on that addendum? If there are no questions or discussion, let's vote.
Uh, Gina Vaschetti. Brian Keys.
Yes.
Capricule Leskey. Aaron O'Leary.
Yes.
Michael Schraub.
Yes.
Jennifer Bachelor.
Yeah.
Martha Dennis.
Yes.
Ryan Tom Marino.
Yeah.
And Jim Gallagher.
Yes.
Um, with that, we do have on our agenda a period for public comment. Um, the uh. Uh, that period, uh, we will open now. Um, I will say that I have a few remarks about that. First of all. Um, we do because of the nature of this meeting and the timing of it, we are going to limit the total. Public comment period to ten minutes. Um, we do procedures and requirements that include standard conduct that need to be followed. Um, to the public, if a member of the public comes disruptive during a public meeting. Including during any period of public comment. Member of the board charged running the public meetings should warn the disruptive members of the public. The continued disruption may result in being prevented from speaking during the public meeting. Or moves from the public meeting, disruptive conduct includes sustained and appropriate behaviors. Such as but not necessarily negative, shouting, nor often. With vanity or comments seen as abusive or seen as more detrimental. And no participant has to be drawn once during his public time period. Uh, members of the public are invited to address the board on any matter for a maximum of three minutes during these portion of the period. Um, yes, that you come to the podium. Uh, just. Give us your name and the municipality where you live. And uh, and make your statement to the board. Uh, with that, public comment period is open. Does anyone have someone and something they'd like to bring before the board? Uh, we do have one online statement.
So I'll read it. It's from Sean Pfeifer. Uh. West Danwell Township. I'd like to thank the board for listening to the comments I provided at your September twenty ninth board meeting and for taking steps to disclose the issue I outlined with the wastewater management plan and septic system. And category one stream to the addendum to your contract for sale that is on the board agenda for your special meeting today. I do have an unrelated question with respect to the auction itself. Most of the activity seems to have been within the last day. What happens if a new bid is made within? The final seconds of the auction, is the timer extended for any period of time to allow? The prior higher bidder or others to make a new bid, or does the auction simply end at the moment the counter? Reaching zero. So what I would say to that is, right now, the auction is scheduled um, to end at two thirty. Um, just in reference to his comments, everything that our auctioneer and our real commercial broker told us. The thing will. Possibly heat up from two to two thirty, that we probably would only expect a few bids leading up to that, which has been accurate so far. Um, as far as the ending, uh, although the auction ends at two thirty, from everything our broker and auctioneer said. It will probably wrap up closer by to about two fifty PM. Um, so I think there will be opportunities there. Um, kind of work through the final highest bid before the board was to make a decision. One way or another, as far as what actually may we take meaning forward. So that's basically what we've been instructed by our auctioneer and by our commercial broker.
Yeah, there is no snipe bidding. So there is a timer that resets if it gets close to that two thirty original cutoff. It does extend by a certain amount of minutes to allow new bidders to come in, which is why, as the shooter said, it could end at closer to two.
Excellent. Excellent question, and I like the answer, so.
Snipe bidding would be, it's like somebody saw what the bid was and they wanted to bid one dollar over. But the current bid is right at the, eh, two twenty nine.
Two twenty nine thirty five.
And uh, so to allow for that, the timer will automatically extend itself by a certain amount of minutes, I believe. Four to eight minutes to allow.
And the auctioneer also controlled the increments, and you've noticed originally it was about a hundred thousand, now it's been reduced to seventy five thousand. As that number increases, that number will continue and start to come down a bit, and the bid will get a lot closer to one dollar.
Point of clarification, we would probably never get to the point where it was a dollar.
No.
Okay.
Oh. Oh.
That's how it works on like eBay, I think, something like that.
And the price is right.
Both of us would be provided.
Price is right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, here's hoping they overfit the show.
Yes.
Um. Okay, uh, last opportunity for public comment. Oh, I'm sorry, Jim, go ahead.
Well, so I just, if. One more public comment. Um, I did um, have someone reach out to me um, last night and bring up. Um. The tiles in the West Danwell.
Yeah.
We haven't talked about it in a while, and I said, I didn't know.
So here's what we decide. Two things. We also have a member of the audience, I think, who had asked me at one time about tiles. Um. We've had some parents make requests. To have their child's tile removed. Which we're open to, however, there are no guarantees that they will not break. So what we decided to do several weeks ago is I have. Melanie LaPaca, who's our TV production studio teacher, going over and doing a video montage of all the tiles.
Yeah.
Throughout the building, and then we are going to create that into a YouTube link. And be able to share with the community, so it's always there forever. And some music to it and a cool thing. We also are going to interview a few uh, former graduates of the West Danwell School to go along with that video. Just to share some of your thoughts. And then, like I said, if we do have some folks, and I know of a few, once we're done with the video, we will try to remove them, but again. It's tough. There's no guarantees that they're not going to crack when we try to do that.
If, if they, we have the option to do uh, remove, would they maybe want to come in and take their own picture of their tile? I think maybe that would be something.
That's a possibility, or we could take it and send it to them. There's, there's different. The ones that actually were asked. Of me already, I've already taken pictures of them until I have them.
Yeah.
Um, I went over there to find them, but uh, we'll kind of see how that plays out. Because I know that was an important thing.
Make sure we get the mural. Right, the big one that we had done.
Good.
Any other public comment for this? Ever? Um, if not, I will close the period of public comment. And uh, we will be, so the way the rest of this meeting is going to go, we are going to. Move in a moment or two to go into an executive session, so we will leave this room. Uh, we will, uh, wait um, until uh, two thirty for the results of the auction, so we. Um, the live stream, I understand, will remain on here?
Yeah, it'll just be a sign that says we're in the exact, we'll return. So if the board does decide to take action, which Jim will talk about in a second. Um, we'll come back in, reopen the stream, and if folks are at home, this will probably be closer to three o'clock. I want to check out where we landed, uh, they can do that.
Right, and so we will be coming back from that uh, uh, executive session possibly around three o'clock. Um, some point after two fifteen, in case. And uh. We may have, we may be taking that, which basically we'll be voting to accept. Uh, one of the uh. You know, whatever the highest bid is, we feel that that's an acceptable bid. Any questions?
Perfect.
Yes.
Perfect time, uh-huh, okay. Pass the. Um. So let's try and, we'll try and beat Helen Torres into our win. Um, so uh, I will need a vote to go into executive session, that's okay.
So moved.
By Aaron and second by Michael. Thank you, all in favor. All right, okay. We will take that. Four minute leave set before we get there.
Ellen is on across country, so we are.
Oh, we better, we best hustle then, is that what you're saying?
Favor. Yes.
So we'll need a motion to come out of executive session at three forty one P M.
Summat.
By Aaron, thank you. I have a second please.
Second.
Second by Jen, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh so we do have to make a motion. Have a motion on here. We do have to make a motion to accept the uh contract and the sale with a sale price of one point two one million dollars. Um with a closing date thirty days from today to company that's name is in the contract but is uh completely taken from my mind.
Orlando or lot.
Orlando lot.
So we do need a motion for that. And by Ronnie, thank you. Can we have a second please?
Second.
The second by Brian. Uh is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, we need a roll call vote for this.
Uh Jennifer Bachelor?
Yes.
Martha Dennis?
Yes.
Gina Faschetti?
Yes.
Ryan Keith?
Yes.
Kevin Golleti? Aaron O'Leary?
Yes.
Michael Shouse?
Yes.
Monty Tomarino?
Yeah.
And Jim Gallagher?
Yes, I will mention that Kevin and I were texting throughout the process, so I was keeping him updated on everything. Um he is working and was unable to call in and come in today. I appreciate all of his support. Oh.
Okay, then we, I guess we better for for the sake of making sure that we're covering all of our bases, we are also approving the attached resolution, which gives us the authority to sign the contract.
Um I again, I need someone to make that note. Soundless. By Michael, thank you. Have a second please. By Martha, thank you very much. Um again, a roll call.